... of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington State University, online at NWPR.org.
You got any recycling? I think I can take it for you.
Yeah. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, January 12th meeting of the Moscow Administrative Committee, our first administrative committee of 2015. To my right is Jim Boland, to my left is John Weber, and I'm Dan Karskellin. I'm gonna go a little off the agenda here. I don't have to tell anybody what happened on Saturday. Nobody can truly know how such evil can creep into someone's heart and will probably never know the why of the situation. But I'd like to thank all of our responders. It all starts with the dispatchers, and then the police department and our fire and EMS volunteers come into the scene, and then our detectives and our county coroner's department doing their investigation. From what I heard, local law enforcement work together famously, so I'd like to put out thanks to the Idaho State Patrol and Leittah County Sheriff's Office for stepping up and helping our Moscow Police Department to secure the scenes and filter through the evidence. It was a long day for everyone. I hope that we can keep this from becoming a policy war and concentrate on making Moscow a better and safer place for everyone. Let the justice system do its job and let the families of the victims have time to heal. The city is hurting from these heinous actions of one individual, but none of us are hurting as much as those directly affected, so I'd like to keep them in your thoughts. With that, I guess our first order of business is the selection of a committee chair and vice chair. Mr. Weber?
I would nominate Dan Karskellin as the chair of the committee, and I guess-
You're gonna nominate a slate?
Yes.
Okay.
And since I am probably the longest member other than yourself, I would nominate myself to be the vice chair.
I'm with you, fellers.
Okay. Can we say that that's a go-ahead and acclamation?
Absolutely. If Jim's going to second it, then you can-
I'll second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go with that and continue on. The next is the approval of December eight minutes. John, I think you were the only one at that meeting. Did you see anything that was in toward?
Yes. No, I went through this, and they are fine, so I would make a motion that we approve those minutes.
All right, we'll go ahead and consider them approved.
Okay.
So, that's our agenda. Next up is reports. First report is the Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties Update, and Jen Pifner's gonna give that to us. And it looks like she's got a show.
I am here to give a brief report on the status of the Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties program that the city entered into back in January of 2012. This coming, let's see, February actually marks the fifth year of the program's existence federally. That was begun by First Lady Michelle Obama, and the goal is to improve healthy eating and active living types of behaviors for kids across the nation. Since the program was created, invented, the National League of Cities took over or joined in the effort to assist elected officials in providing the program, and at that time there were some changes made as well. When you first heard about this, it was probably talked about in the context of pillars and meeting objectives, and since then it's turned into goals, and you earn medals now. So, it's a little bit different way to go about it. I'm just gonna give a quick update on the medals that the city has earned to date. I'll start with a quick overview of the goals.
Excuse me, Jen, could you explain what medals are? They aren't physical medals, are they?
Yes, true. They aren't physical medals. We get medal rankings on the website. We have a webpage with the National League of Cities Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties program, but there's different levels of participation for each of the goals, and so bronze would be the least amount of things you could do to participate in that goal. Gold, of course, would be the full gamut of things you could do to participate in meeting those goals as they're outlined. Start Early, Start Smart is early care and education program provider information. My Plate, Your Place, that partners with the food pyramid that we all used to know that is now more of a My Plate graphic and description for that. Smart Servings for Students refers to school breakfast and lunch programs, as well as other ways to provide access to healthy and affordable foods. So, for instance, our SNAP program that we provide through the market also applies in that area. Model Food Service is the food service items and options that we have within city facilities. And then Active Kids at Play, this one's the most detailed here. It shows primarily that we're aware of our play spaces, we know of our needs, we know of our actions that we would like to take to improve play spaces, and we've got policies in place to increase access to play. Just starting with the first goal, we actually technically have a bronze right now. By the end of the month, we should have a gold medal in this category. Some of the things that we've done is the additional licensing requirements for daycares in Moscow. And I should note, before we jump into the goals, each of these things, activities that we've done are things that we would've done anyway, or were very simple partnership-type activities that we would've done had they come up regardless of Let's Move. So, it's been a fairly simple approach to the program, and we've seen, I think, a lot of good outcomes out of that. For the silver category, we help promote, this was the best activity we were able to do this last fall, and pretty simple, the Department of Health and, or, excuse me, Public Health Idaho North Central District partnership. We developed a partnership with them to provide training for daycare providers. We acted as the host. We use city council chambers. We used our media outlets to let people know that the training was available, and by doing that, we didn't actually have to host the training or provide the training, but we were able to partner in that and achieve the silver and gold levels for this medal. So, by the end of January, our bronze will be a gold in this particular medal. So, we look forward to doing that again. Again, it was a great partnership, very simple for us to be able to promote that, use our facility, but let the professionals actually do the training, which was helpful. My Plate, Your Place, this is simply a level of participation for being a My Plate partner, and we've done that as a city, and then displaying the My Plate posters in facilities that sell food. And so, that's for us, the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center, the Pool, and the Egan Youth Center. And Egan's a little bit, it's a borderline one. We have vending machines there, but we don't actually sell any food, but we put the poster up annually anyway. We re-up those every summer just in case they're not in as good a shape or have maybe fallen behind a vending machine somewhere. So, we get those up every year and make sure we've got them posted as well.
So, we're a gold in-
I'm sorry, yes, we are a gold and gold two as well. Goal three is really relates to the summer, or, excuse, summer lunch programs, breakfast programs and lunch programs at our local school district. In addition, we've made some strides as a city to enhance access to healthy foods through our SNAP food stamps, being able to accept those at the market. So, we've done a few things, and primarily this revolves around promoting the program as a whole and participating as a feeding site, and we do that through our summer lunch program with the Moscow School District. We've had them at both Gormly and at the Egan for the last couple of years now, and then by making some copies of posters, sending media releases using our social media outlets, we're able to help promote as well. In addition, we've, in the past, mentioned these summer lunch programs either at a state-of-the-city meeting or in a council meeting, just to let people know that that's out there and available, and that people can take advantage of that program if they need to. This is a gold medal as well. Goal four is an item that we have not done much with yet. This is something that we've looked into a bit, I should say, but have not made any strides in it. Our first step would be to identify all of the contracts for any vendors that provide food or beverages within the city. We've looked at this a little bit with our vending machines, but haven't gone much beyond that. And then from there, developing policies as advised by the dietary guidelines for Americans, and then make some changes policy-wise to those to further enforce those guidelines. So, this is one we haven't attempted yet. We have no medal status in this, and something we could look at going forward.
Really, the only thing that you could do anything with is our vending machines.
Herkin Pool.
I would note that aside from this program, we have made contact with our vending machine vendors in the city. We are restricted by who can vend within the city because-
The ISDB.
Exactly. So, Idaho Commission on the Blind has the franchise for vending machines. We've talked to them about offering more healthy choices, things like that. Of course, their indication is they want to have healthy choices, and they have made some strides. However, they typically don't sell as well as maybe some other things, so we've made suggestions, asked, they have responded somewhat, but not to the extent that we-
So, the broccoli and D5 isn't doing as well as the Rolos?
Something like, I guess.
Well, we've done the similar things in some of our Parks and Rec facilities. Dwight Curtis has let us know that we've tried some of the salads or apples for kids at the Herk after they're done playing basketball, and they just don't go for those items, so.
We do our own vending there, though.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Well, we have contracts to purchase food and then concession it out that way, but we would have to make some changes there, and we haven't found that perfect combination of healthy and fun, so.
That's where the education comes in, so we're working on that.
Yeah. But again, goal five, we have a gold medal, so it's literally out of four out of the five medal, or, goals, we have a gold medal in. This one came together pretty quickly when I got our Parks and Rec Master Plan completed recently. Maps our play spaces, shows needs assessments, shows plans for improvement. Also, we've got great examples of joint use agreements, most recently with the Moscow Community Playfields agreements. Of course, we've got our agreements with charter schools and other facilities as well. Zoning ordinances under the strategies for walking and biking to school or work. Safe routes to school has been a great resource for that. And then multimodal transportation options. We've done just really well in that particular category. We only have to have three to be a gold, and we have seven or eight, I think, if I count correctly.
So, we got a double gold, maybe?
I don't know if we get a double gold. I think we are ranked, we've gotten a notice that we are ranked within the top 10 or 10% of cities within the nation participating in this program. So, we've done fairly well, and I think it's just a combination of being aware of the opportunities we have and working well with our partners to make it happen. So, it's been a fun and interesting program to kind of work on over the past few years.
John, as you noted earlier, a lot of the things that we're doing here are things that we have been doing or we're going to do anyway, which makes it a little easier to gain some of this, and also, you folks are all to be audit for being on a lot of the cutting-edge stuff to try to get some of these items to make young kids especially healthier and more active, and we're already doing them, so I think that's a pretty good deal.
Jerry?
Other than just the accolades for being successful participants in the program, it also gives us a step up. Grants come up occasionally that if you have programs in place to assist in reducing childhood obesity, increasing activity, those sorts of things, that will give you a leg up in pursuing these grants. So, it's a win-win all the way around.
Well, Matt, what's gonna be my question is, what is our participation in this doing for us? And I think that explains it. Jim?
A great example of that is our recent High Five program that we are in. We just finished year one. We have year two coming up. That was a $30,000 foundation grant that allowed us to do additional programming and things at the market to help build on this as well, so.
Good. I guess, so, this will continue?
Yes, the program is still continuing. Like I said, they're celebrating their fifth year, and we'll start looking at goal number four. Kind of the focus this last year just came up when the health department approached us and said, "Hey, how can we help you with this?" They did get a grant to help communities participate in Let's Move, and our biggest deal was the daycare. We can't, we don't have anyone with the expertise to do this training specifically, but we said we'd love to partner and host something. So, that was kind of how we looked at the fifth goal there, or, excuse me, third goal.
Or was it?
Third, maybe the first.
Yeah, you'll recall that we had someone from the Idaho Children's, the daycare network, I can't remember her name, presented to council, the Stars Program back in the fall, and we need to get in contact with her and find out what the outline for the program is, present that to council, see if they want to proceed with that as well. So, that may be something that would help us.
What Jen is talking about, about bringing in the providers and having some sort of training or something with that.
Yeah, well, this one was specific to Let's Move. The Department of Health got a grant to do Let's Move Childcare training. There's different categories. Let's Move Childcare, Let's Move Restaurants, Let's Move, there's five or six of them. And so, that was how that came up there, working on the grant, said, "Hey, what can we do to help you meet your Let's Move initiatives? By the way, we've got to do a training." I said, "Well, that's exactly how you can help us meet this particular one." So, it worked out very well.
Good. All right. Okay, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Our next up is the accessory dwelling unit project update with Mike Ray. This is probably something Jim knows about.
One or two times. Afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi, Mike.
Hi. Well, I just wanted to give you a brief report on a project that Planning and Zoning Commission's been working on for about a year. This may be repetitive for a couple of you, since you have the council liaison as well as Jim was working on this project. So, to start off, just wanted to cover really what accessory dwelling units are, and they are separate additional living unit, which is incidental and accessory to a principal dwelling unit on a single lot. They're generally small in scale, include studio, one-bedroom units. They do not change the character of the property, so remaining single-family. Can be principal structure or a detached structure, can also be basically attached to the principal structure or within that principal structure, as well as within a detached structure on the property. Owner occupancy upon the property, and this could be in the principal accessory unit. This is typically what we see in other jurisdictions, that the owner is required to reside either in one of those two units. They're often called granny flats, mother-in-law units, or accessory apartments, and those have been the historical terms over the years. And just wanted to cover why communities allow ADUs within their community. Number one, they create new housing while preserving character of neighborhood, so you have single-family character in that neighborhood, well, that doesn't change. You have the unit, whether it's in the existing single-family dwelling or maybe a detached garage, so it doesn't take away from the character of the neighborhood. It allows for efficient use of the housing stock and public infrastructure. You know, we're not creating new roads, new houses in order to accommodate accessory dwelling units there in basically existing neighborhoods throughout the city. Also provides affordable housing opportunities. Generally, just the small-scale nature of the dwelling units creates those affordable housing opportunities. Also provides smaller household housing opportunities and a means of income for residents, and it may allow family members to care for elderly or disabled while providing independent living opportunity. You also have some of those elderly folks that may be aging in place, and that may provide, you know, a younger generation to move in and care for those people without having to move out of the neighborhood, and also provide some companionship. So, where we've gotten to up to this point, it was first introduced in the Moscow Citizen Survey, and that was 2012 Citizen Survey. Reported fairly strong support for ADUs within the survey. Staff had researched other accessory dwelling unit ordinance within cities, primarily in the Northwest. And then on January 22nd, 2014, the commission conducted the first open house. Within the open house, we had included a survey at the very end, so we introduced the topic, looked at zoning maps, and also provided the opportunity to have some feedback from the public that attended that night. We also had the same survey available online for about three weeks afterwards on our project website, which is linked off of city homepage. We had 28 respondents that, the outcome of whether the survey at the open house or the online survey. And then on April 2nd, 2014, the commission conducted the second open house. This also included a survey, similar questions to the first open house, and that same survey was available online for about a month afterwards, but we did encounter some compromised results. There was a biased party that flooded our online survey and just, you know, basically compromised the results of that online survey, and so we had to throw those out, unfortunately. And then just recently, on October of last year, the commission decided to send out a direct mailed survey to a random sample of residents, which was statistically valid. 342 residents were mailed the survey. We had a 23% response rate, about 78 completed surveys out of that 342 residences, and we had nine surveys which were undeliverable. So, as part of that survey, it included two of the same questions that were also included on the 2012 Citizen Survey, as well as the January open house survey. The crux of the survey contained questions about allowing ADUs, usage of ADUs if permitted, specific standards for permitting ADUs in the neighborhood, as well as ownership information, whether or not the owner is required to live on the property, and basically number of occupants within ADUs. We compiled aggregate data. We also had the results from the R1, R2, as well as the R3 and R4 neighborhoods, and so we coded those surveys, and so we could identify trends within those different areas. So, I just wanted to go over our survey results from that October survey. The first question we had asked is which best describes a building that you live in? And predominantly, single-family. So, 67% responded that they do live in a single-family household. You had multifamilies, about 21%, duplex townhouse made up 7% of those, and then you had about 5% of the respondents stating that they had lived in a mobile home. And then out of the people that we sent the survey, how many owned or rented their home? 71% of those respondents ended up owning their home. So, predominantly, single-family, and predominantly owner-occupied for those homes. So, really good information. Residing zone of survey respondents, pretty evenly distributed. So, we have R1, R2, R3, R4. We also have a small percentage in motor business, university, suburban residential and residential office that are making up a small percentage of the results, but all in all, pretty evenly distributed across the R1, R2, R3, and R4 zones. When asked the question, "I would support allowing ADUs in my neighborhood," 27% strongly agreed, as well as 36% just agreed, and so we have a total agreeance of 63% compared to total disagree of 18%. So, pretty high results as far as agreeing that they would like ADUs allowed in their neighborhood.
So, in the survey, there was some sort of definition or example of what an ADU is?
Yeah, we had a cover sheet, and that basically described what accessory dwelling units were, and it described the process up to this point with the open houses, and so we provided all the background information, and so residents could get a sense of-
They know what they're agreeing on.
-the questions that we were asking them. Yep.
Thanks.
Moving on, "In which category is your age?" is what we had asked, and so pretty evenly dispersed in this as well, so across all age categories. If you were to add an ADU to your property, who would it be for? Primarily, 37% of those respondents indicated that it'd be rental income. Also, a large proportion of them, elderly family members, made up a quarter of those. Myself, so maybe that you live in the accessory dwelling unit and then you rent out your single-family dwelling upon the property. You also have 7% of the respondents indicating that it'd be for a disabled family member. Next question, "If ADUs permitted in my neighborhood, I would be interested in adding an ADU to my property." So, total agreeance here is 20%, either strongly agree or just agree, and this is up a little bit from the Citizen Survey question from 2012, which I believe was around 14%. And so, you look at about 31% showing as neutral, and this may be that, well, maybe at one point in their life, they may look at adding an ADU to the property, but not right now. That could change, as well as about 19% of those disagreed, and then you have 15% or 23% strongly disagree. So, total disagreement is 42% on whether or not they'd be interested in adding it to their property. Next question we went through was, "I would support ADUs as a permitted use in all residential zones." We have 53% either strongly agree or just agree on this question, and disagree is about 33%. And so, we see this go down from the first question that we asked, where you would want ADUs permitted in your neighborhood or allowed in your neighborhood. I think the reduction here is that some of those households and zoning districts that are maybe R1 or 2 would maybe want a conditional use permit, and so instead of just permitted by right, they would want some type of public hearing and go through the CUP process, and I think that's why we see a little bit of a reduction in this question here. Moving on, "I would support ADUs as a conditionally permitted use in all residential zones," and you see a little bit of an increase here. Agree total, 48%, and then the disagree total is down a little bit, 26%. So, believe that's why the intent of that question. Then I would support ADUs as permitted accessory use in R3 and R4. Pretty high agreeance here, 76% either strongly agree or just agree. So, it's pretty clear that out of those respondents, that they should be just allowed as that accessory use in R3 and R4. The next question, "I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in R2 and R1." Down a little bit less, 62% either strongly agree or just agree, and then you have about 21% that disagree. So, down a little bit, but this still could-
Still two-thirds.
Yeah, still two-thirds. It's still the majority of people would like them in R1, R2 as an accessory use. Then we also asked them about specific standards for ADUs that we had typically seen in other jurisdictions, and so we'd covered design, location of entrances, owner occupancy, off-street parking, maximum occupancy, and maximum size. Asked the respondents how they would rate basically those elements or those standards of accessory dwelling units. We also converted those findings to a 100-point scale on the right, so we could really determine which of those aspects were really important to the respondents. And the majority of them were locations of entrances is down, so that's not that important to the people that responded. But as well as owner occupancy, off-street parking, maximum occupancy, and maximum size, limiting the size of the accessory dwelling unit, were all important factors in people's minds that responded to the survey. And I just wanted to do a comparison, and this is basically the 2012 Citizen Survey compared to the October survey that we mailed out last year. Pretty similar, right? We have agree total matches up identically, the disagree total, about a 1% difference there. So, talk about statistically valid between the 2012 Citizen Survey and this last mailing, pretty good representation about what the public is thinking on this topic, so. And we also asked this other question that we compared for both surveys about the, "If they were permitted in my neighborhood, I would be interested in adding an ADU to my property." And so, this is what I referred to before, jumped up a little bit. So, you had the agree total in the 2012 Citizen Survey at 13%, and that went up 7% between 2012 and the end of 2014. So, just a little bit of a difference there. So, following these results, when they were reviewed at the December 10th meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission had requested staff to prepare a draft ordinance based upon the following elements, to include R1, R2, R3, and R4 zones, to have accessory dwelling units permitted by right within those zoning districts, as well as include the following standards, with size, limit those to 600 square feet or 40% of the square footage of the dwelling, the principal dwelling on the property, whichever's less. And then maximum occupancy would be limited to two occupants within the accessory dwelling unit, and require owner occupancy. So, the owner of the property must reside in either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. And also require off-street parking at a rate of one space per accessory dwelling unit. And so, typically, if you have a single-family dwelling, you're required to have two off-street parking spaces anyway. This would be in addition to those two, and so you'd be required to have three off-street parking spaces if it was a single-family dwelling on the property. Next steps, the draft ordinance will be reviewed at this upcoming Wednesday, January 14th meeting, as well as the meeting on the 28th of this month, and it's tentatively scheduled for public hearing at February 11th, 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And if all goes well, it's anticipated to go before city council on March 2nd, 2014. So, with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have, but just wanted to provide you with a report.
Since you two know everything about it.
The main thing that's changed from previous iterations, and this is the conditional use permit was kind of a bone of contention. A number of people that lived in the R1 area especially expressed concern that it would change the character of the neighborhood. And with a lot of discussion, it was decided that the conditions that are applied to this already- already
It's a precondition.
Right, the conditions are already there. Anyone trying to meet those, meet any other conditions, those are the conditions they would have to meet. So we decided
What else could you add?
Right. The concerns of people in the R1 are that it would change the character of the neighborhood because you'd potentially be adding another rental unit and that if everyone in the block added one, that it would turn into more of an R2 kind of a situation. But I think with the owner occupancy and all the other conditions, that's probably not the case. And the way things are currently, if you're worried about your neighborhood becoming a rental, it's possible now to buy all the houses in the neighborhood and turn them into rentals.
Right.
And there's no limits. There's way more, way more conditions on this small dwelling unit than there is on a current single family home as a rental. So I think those concerns have kind of been answered.
Well, the two survey questions that got me were there was more support for allowing them, but I'm not necessarily going to build one. I mean, that's what I see people saying is, you know, I'm okay with them, but I don't want it.
Now, that's exactly what one of the members of Planning and Zoning said, that with the limit of 600 square feet per unit and two maximum and the other things that were put in there to prevent spread, the cost, most people that put them in are going to be doing it originally essentially to take care of a family member or something like that, which is exactly the reason the whole process got started. Because the cost benefit ratio of building one, building a 600 unit or 600 square foot apartment is still going to cost $100,000. There's no way it can pencil out if that is the only thing you're talking about. If you're talking about taking care of a family member or something of that nature, then it might work. So I think all of the, and believe me, Planning and Zoning went over this a lot. And took great care in trying to develop a program that would work and fulfill both needs, mainly keeping a neighborhood that is R1 or R2 the same and giving people the opportunity to create a living unit separate from the house.
I think Don had something.
Come on up, Don.
I've stayed pretty quiet on the accessory dwelling unit, but this is getting so close to draft ordinance time that I need to at least have public comment and so, or staff comment it should say. One of the things that we have a problem with right now is landlord tenant issues we've had for over 20 years. And we've documented, we've taken it to council several times throughout the last 12 years. But one of the things that we, this will complicate even more so, is the determination or trying to discern what is a accessory dwelling unit versus a multifamily. And we've come to the conclusion in utility billing that we would have to treat this as a multifamily unit and treat it as a duplex. Because we have no way to discern whether it's a mother-in-law or just a rental. And so anyway, just commenting on that by itself, I've not heard any comments whatsoever. We've discussed it with community development in the past and it still has not been brought forward publicly, so I wanted to make that comment.
How does that, if I build one, how does it change my bill if I'm then billed as a duplex?
It will double it.
So basically, it just doubles your
It'll double your water and sewer bill and possibly change the garbage depending on what the service level is. But we have on-demand and we've made concerns about that. And I believe the commercial, it'd be considered commercial at that point, so we would charge for a street light that'd be at $7.05 as opposed to the single family. This is all stuff that hasn't been talked about in terms of utility billing processes, but we need to be concerned about how we treat that and we have no way to discern that in our office except to treat it as such.
We have a meeting set up tomorrow to discuss this topic, but and what other communities have done is that they'd have a registration system. So if you're going to create an accessory dwelling unit, then you're required to register it with the city. And so you need to have it inspected. Some of them do an annual fee, which is, you know, what we're probably not proposing at this point, but that's how other communities have addressed them.
So, and I don't want to throw more monkeys in the wrench, but are you talking about maybe creating a separate level and interim level between the regular house
We would treat it
ADU or duplex or
We would just treat it
Right now, you would treat it as a duplex.
Right, right now, we treat it exactly as a duplex.
So they, a duplex right now has one meter going into it.
Correct. Because it's considered, and I would throw it in the multifamily classification because it's a single meter. So that's, that's the problem we're having.
Duplexes have one meter?
Well, code now requires two, but we have about seven, between 50 and 70 properties that are single, have a single meter because there was a timeframe in which they allowed that.
So what if I built a unit and put in another meter? Or is that something I
Then we would just build it as a second residence.
So there's another option.
There is, but, but I'm just saying that this creates a layer
Right.
Of problems that we have not yet discussed. And even though we have a meeting set up for tomorrow, this isn't an advance of this kind of discussion to have an ordinance set up for this month, so.
I think also you probably better look at addressing.
And my other concern is you mentioned that 26% of the survey respondents were rentals. Well, that throws it into 20, which limits really 50 legible respondents that really own property. So I wonder what that changes all those statistics when you consider the fact that we don't, you know, we'd rather deal with owners because they have, they have the meat into the
Right.
In the issues, but we still have to address this.
Yeah, the overall landlord tenant issues are things that, as Don said, we brought to council in the past, gone back, tweaked it a little bit, but really no wholesale changes have been made for years. So that's coming to you too. I think we had spring set for bringing that back up. So you'll be seeing a lot of this issue in the next couple of months.
I just didn't want to complicate that issue when we already have an issue
Right.
Already being set there. So it creates a lot of problems for us.
Yeah, like I said, I think we need to talk about addressing too for, if nothing else, emergency response.
Sure.
So are we going to have a bunch of half addresses or how are we going to deal with that? So, and I guess into my other things here, we're not trying to encourage these as far as encouraging people to build, we're just allowing them. That's
It's just to give people the option.
Right. And then the two-person limit now, I saw some of the, some of the respondents were, okay, I'm having family over for graduation or something. And is there, you know, are we going to hassle them for putting the four kids out there so they don't have to have them in the house or whatever?
These are just people that reside there, you know, on a full-time basis, basically.
Okay. That's all I got. You guys got anything else?
No, I just think we have to keep in mind, like was stated, is that this is an option for people. And quite frankly, if they had two meters and you charged everything double, that's essentially what I thought we were going to do anyway. So I don't know, Jim, whether we didn't, that was not discussed.
Oh, it was discussed. We talked about it in terms of if you, if you put an accessory dwelling unit in the existing structure, that it could be the same. And if you, if you had a separate structure, then you had an addressing issue like Dan brings up. And also you have a, you'd have to run a separate service to it, so it might as well be on another meter.
Right.
But it could, it could be hooked to the same meter. Those things came up in the discussion, certainly, especially the addressing part that
Yeah.
As a health and safety thing, if some, if you're responding to a fire or, you know, someone with a heart attack or something in a residence, you need to know that there's a separate entrance or access to that.
All things that can be worked out.
Yes. Looks like Bill wants to add a little something to it, so we'll let everybody have their.
Just wanted to clarify, we did a year ago, talk, sat down with police and fire staff to talk about the addressing issues and that they would have to have visible addresses from the primary street at the response point. Also, how they'd be connected, whether they have separate meters or not. The one question that hadn't been answered was utility billing, how would they be billed for both water, sewer and sanitation services? And that meeting is set up for tomorrow. So this wouldn't be coming to the council until March and I'm sure we'll have time to work through those questions.
You've got a little bit of time to hash it out. Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike's going to stay with us for upcoming code amendments on alternate front yard setback.
Well, I just wanted to brief the council on a code amendment which has been scheduled for hearing next Tuesday, I guess it'll be, on the alternate front yard setback. And so where this originated was the 2013 council goal. We had the goal to expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from East Street to the South Cuplet through construction of streetscape improvements, as well as the evaluation of zoning and development standards within this area, kind of the North Main Street corridor. So we had identified that we needed to incorporate residential uses in commercial zones. And so that code amendment has already gone through and been approved by City Council. And there was another aspect to that, which was to reduce setbacks in motor business. And this was primarily just for that North Main Street corridor. So Planning and Zoning Commission had taken a look at this. And really, the major areas where you have the motor business zone are along the highway corridors. And this is really a specific area on North Main Street. And even though it's motor business, it's similar to the downtown area, right? We have wider sidewalks, the street speed limit there is still 25. You go out to the major highway corridors and you jump up to 35 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour. And it's a little more insecure for a pedestrian. And that 10-foot setback there really isn't a whole lot when you get to that scale and that, that level of speed limit. And so we decided to take a look at the alternate front yard setback, which currently exists within our zoning code. And that's basically just to address front yard setbacks in residential areas. And so I had brought this to the commission to discuss the possibility on October 22nd as well as November 7th of 2014. And this is the way our current alternate front yard setback section currently states. And so it only applies to residential zoning districts. And basically what it states is that if you have a line of houses on a street and one burns down, there's an empty lot, and the setback is maybe 20 feet, well, maybe if all the existing structures are maybe 10 feet away from the front property line. That means that this house that's going to be built basically has to be 20 feet instead of the current street wall, the, all the rest of the houses are built. So basically, it allows you to take an average setback of the principal dwellings on either side of that lot. And so if there's a 10-foot setback on one side, a 10 on the other, you'd average that out and you'd be able to build 10 feet instead of have to step the building back 20 feet. And so we thought we'd just amend this portion to include all zoning districts, not just residential, but to include commercial. And so our proposed amendment eliminates the residential aspect of the alternate front yard setback, also adds some language about the zoning administrator granting modifications to the front yard setback of new principal buildings on the subject property provided. And then goes into basically similar language to what we had before, lets you take the average, but also incorporates a new section or new subsection, which allows you to take 60% or more of the principal buildings within a numbered block on the same side of the street as a subject property, or setback less than the required zoning front setback. The average setback of the existing non-conforming structures may be used to establish the minimum front yard of all properties fronting on that side of the street. So it gives you basically both options. You're able to use the average or you're able to use the 60%. And this is just to illustrate basically what, what that does. And so let's take the North Main Street corridor, the building outlined in red of the property here. Let's say they want to do an addition or they want to, you know, maybe it burns down and they want to rebuild. Well, they wouldn't be able to, they have a basically a 10-foot setback, they wouldn't be able to build right back up to this street wall here up against the sidewalk because they have a 10-foot setback in motor business. And if you were to utilize the average setback, you'd be basically utilizing this setback here, which is probably 30 feet. And this setback's obviously zero. And so you'd still be looking at the 10 to 15-foot setback range there for that building. So that really doesn't achieve what we had intended to really for this area. So the, basically the average doesn't work, so you look at the 60%. Well, 60% of the buildings that are constructed within this block are basically built right up to the street. So you're able to utilize that and you'd be able to reconstruct or construct an addition on that property outlined in red. And you basically have a zero-foot front setback, which would maintain the building wall and the character of at least this block, which is zone motor business. So that's really the intent. And it's also to address issues like this. And so it's twofold. It handles those areas in the commercial zones, but it also handles areas in residential zones that we've been having issues with for a time, just because you can notice on this block on the east side of the street, well, all the buildings are basically have the same setback and they're built almost right up to the back edge of the sidewalk. Well, you have this rogue property here to the north. So let's say this property gets, you know, gets burnt down or they want to rebuild. Well, basically, you'd have maybe a 15-foot front setback that you'd have to meet, which would be somewhere back here. Alternate front yard setback, if you take the average, currently doesn't do you any good because you'd be averaging this property and this property. This one's setback 30 feet. And so you'd be back here building at a 15-foot setback, which really doesn't, you know, resemble any of the other building frontage within the area. And so that's really the intent of the 60% provision. And so those are really the two changes that we're proposing with this amendment. And it's been scheduled, like I said, next Tuesday, the 20th, before City Council. So certainly be able to answer any questions that you have, but you'll be hearing more about it.
I've been to the meetings, so has Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys know what's up.
We've been over this with a fine-tuned comb and I think staff's done a great job of coming up with a system that works in, in all these different neighborhoods and gives people enough options to do the right thing in the particular neighborhood.
Okay, works for me. We'll see you next week.
Next Tuesday.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing further, sir.
With that, we'll consider ourselves adjourned. Thanks, everybody.